I will call the meeting to order. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. If you stand if you're able, and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything they wish to speak on? Not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one, I will move on. Does any member of the school committee have anything they wish to bring up? Make it easy tonight.
I do.
Oh, go right ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to recognize the staff, administrators, and everybody else who was involved in the summer programs right now in the Middleborough Public Schools. Personally, I can attest to the basketball camp that was held at the end of June. But I've got a lot of feedback from families. And so far, everything's positive. They like all the different types of programs we're running, whether it's academic, athletics, or arts. So everyone who puts in the time over the summer deserves recognition on that one.
Agreed.
Anybody else have anything? Turn it over to the superintendent.
Good evening, Chairman Young and members of the school committee. Tonight, I have a few items to touch on that I will begin my slide deck now. The first item, there you go. The first item on the agenda is to just recap the MASAS Summer Conference, the annual Paul J. Andrews Executive Institute. Sorry, that's a mouthful. 29th Annual Conference. This happens every July. I attended last year, and I attended this year as well, from July 11th to the 13th. Every year, there's a different theme. This year's theme was talking about students being R Y and its, you know, leading diversity, belonging, equity, and inclusion toward a healthy and successful school community. So all of the presenters, all of the breakout sessions are in some measure connected to that theme. We had presentations from both the Secretary of Education, Patrick Tuttweiler, and Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, Jeff Riley. Jeff Riley's been in his position a long time. Pat Tuttweiler is new in his position. So there was a lot of discussion about vision and what they see happening at the state level. We had a robust presentation on the first day from Project 351, which is a representative from every school district in Massachusetts, a student representative. And they engage with a whole host of initiatives at the state level and together. We have a Project 351 representative here in our district. I'll be sure to bring our candidate in to talk about this when the school year begins. But this panel was, they had a panel of students to present to all the superintendents to just talk about what they hope to see, what belonging means to them. You know, if you could impart one piece of wisdom on school superintendents, what is it, you know? There was a whole panel, so everybody had a slightly different answer. But it was very inspiring. And the conference really began with student voice, which was nice to see. They followed it up with keynote presentations from Nancy Cohn, who wrote a book about forged in crisis. Actually, Ms. Hickey and I read the book oddly enough last summer, but about leadership through crisis periods of time. She kind of snippeted different stories like Rachel Carson before she wrote Silence Spring, that sort of thing. Michael Bonner is a school teacher down in Georgia who spoke about kind of reigniting. He talked about his experience that he almost quit becoming, being a teacher and what caused his turnaround. He talked a lot about education since COVID and, you know, ways to reengage, which was a very inspiring presentation. And then Dr. Darnisa Monte Jackson. She presented out on equity and kind of taught, using equity through a lens of data. Why should people care about this topic is something she said. Well, you know, you have to look at your data. You have to see exactly what's going on in your district in order to know where this work needs to go. All of them were excellent presentations. And they had additional panels as well. There was a robust presentation on school safety with several chiefs of police from across the state. They came and presented out on kind of a host of different topics, ranging from things like security audits to just basic, you know, guidance for every school superintendent. So that was timely and definitely well-attended. There's a legal update that they do every year. And then there's smaller breakout sessions that you self-select into. So I attended ones on, you know, navigating equity in a school system. I attended one on from surviving to thriving, looking at how to be in the role and flourish as opposed to how to be in the role and just sort of eke by. So that was the institute. It's a really important period of time for professional development for a group of people who tend to be planning and not often engaging in it. So that's what the institute is. If you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, I'll proceed to the next item, which is year two of the new superintendent's induction program, which you'll hear me refer to as NSIP. I am beginning year two. Year two looks a lot like year one. All of the same components are the same. There are content days. There's one-to-one coaching. And then there are school visits. So my coach is Dr. Maureen LaCroix. That's not changing. She'll still provide regular in-person and remote sessions with me. She'll also be on campus. She looks at a whole host of things. She came to a school committee meeting last year. She's coming to the, one of the days of the administrative retreat this year. She'll visit with the leadership team and watch that meeting. She'll be on principal learning walks with me, various meetings, strategic stuff, anything, anything that she wants to see. The, the goal is to show the coach all aspects of the job so that she's constantly giving me feedback. How can I improve my practice and think strategically and plan strategically? There are also content days, which are, I believe there are fewer full days. It's still nine sessions, which is similar to this year, but four of, only four of those days are all day in person. And then five of them are remote half-day sessions. Actually, I know there were more half-day sessions for this year. So it's lesser time commitment in terms of the actual sessions, but the work very much continues. And it is a progression where they have a set of expectations for a first-year superintendent, and those expectations are increased in the second year, particularly as it relates to the leadership team and the leadership and management of other administrators in the district. So that's my update on NSAP. Any questions before I go on to the hiring update?
I should mention a couple of things about NSAP. One is that NSAP is sort of the program we've used the last two superintendents, including Caroline. It's a two-year program. It's part of their contract. It is also included in their, we use a lot of what the baseline for NSAP is for the two-year goals for the superintendent. And so when you move beyond to year three, then you get a lot more goals district-wide as opposed to around the program and what they're supposed to do and incorporate in the program. That doesn't mean that the goals don't include some pieces about district issues that we bring up and put together, but it's, it more follows the same line as the NSAP program. So you're, you're following what they're doing. In the past, superintendents would essentially be hired a ment, you would hire a mentor for a newer superintendent, and they would work with the superintendent over the course of usually the first year, a year and a half. But then they created the NSAP program, which is a wholly different piece in the bag. So it's been interesting.
Sure, I can tell you it's widely relied upon. My cohort was cohort 13, which means there were 12 cohorts before me or my class, and there were 26 in that class. That's 26 people at my exact timeframe that became superintendents at that moment in time. This year's cohort, I thought they said, was over 35, which is telling us a story that more, the field is being infused with people who have not previously been a superintendent. So that's 26 in mine, another 35 this year. There are only 275 superintendents in Massachusetts. So if you're a numbers person, that's giving you an idea of what the, the new people, kind of what percentage they make up.
And NSAP's also for new superintendents from other states.
Correct.
So if somebody came from Connecticut or somebody came from New Hampshire, they'd be included most likely in the NSAP program for most of the school districts.
And also executive directors. So our local collaborative, the Reed's Collaborative, just hired a new executive director. And the board unanimously promoted this person's engagement with NSAP because the feeling is that this, we all kind of, I think everybody went through that program, and the desire is to make sure all new leaders have it. So that's, so that's NSAP. Next, I'm going to talk about hiring. Is that moving? Maybe not. There we go. Okay. So I have good news on the hiring front. For 2023, 2024, we actually have very few openings at this point in time. We are very close to fully staffed as a district. Not many districts can say that. We have an opening for special education teacher at the high school level. We have an ELA teacher, an ISS, that's in-school suspension, paraprofessional opening at the Nichols Middle School. We have an assistant cook position open at the Berkland and two ESPs or paraprofessionals, we call them ESPs, at the MEK. District-wide, we are looking to hire a transportation dispatcher, and then we are always hiring drivers. So for it being July 20th, what you are not seeing is a single vacancy in any administrative position and very, very few beyond that. So you might be wondering, why are things going better this year? I gave you some metrics so you could see. We are absolutely in a better position than we were last year, and it's for a few reasons. As always, early posting and early appointments are the key to signing people earlier. This is a practice that's been alive and well in Middleborough for a long time. You have to wait for your budget to be approved at a town meeting, and only after that point can you really start planning for next year. So that's in line with what we did before. But I want to call your attention to three metrics I provided here. We had significantly fewer resignations between last June and this June. 61 versus 35, that's like half. And we had fewer retirements, 15 versus 10. Interestingly, when I looked at how many postings we had last year, we had 112 postings, which is a significant number of new hires. You can see we hired 84 new personnel last year. If you're wondering, well, who are the rest of the people? Those are promotions or shifting jobs, which is also important. One of the things that Jen Healy has been instrumental in is really looking at paraprofessionals who are obtaining licensure and having them become teachers. So I'm proud that that's still happening. As you can see, this year with only 37 postings, it's a fraction, a very small fraction, with 28 new hires. So the good news is I think that we are in, we are in very good shape on the hiring front. I'll have another update in August. I'll continue to come. One of the reasons I come to this meeting is in case anyone is out there. As you know, there was a recent closure at the Christmas tree shop. So we're always looking to hire. This is the best way to market, particularly for something like drivers. That'd be great for people who are new into education or looking to kind of dip their toe into education. There are a lot of places to start. So that's the hiring update. Does anyone have questions about hiring or positions?
Because I was on subcommittee for budget this previous year, we ended up talking about opening up a position for, oh, man. I forget the title that we gave it, but it had to do with the special education, for like an on-call for needs if there was something that was wrong. I remember that had to do with Reed's, and it was, you only had a certain number of like allotments, but if we had this one position.
Oh, I remember.
I'm explaining it really poorly. If you can explain it and then.
Yes, one of your, I know exactly what you're referencing. We, so with the Reed's Collaborative, there is the Reed's Clinic, and you can pay for evaluation slots at a discounted rate as long as you arrange for that to happen at the beginning of the school year. It's actually the previous school year. But Middle, Middleborough has long purchased slots for testing because there are times when a student should be tested outside of our school environment or not by school personnel for a whole host of reasons. What we saw over the last couple of years was that number was ballooning. We were, we were falling short of our slots versus our need for testing. So we started to expend more money than we had planned, to the point where, again, this is Director Healy, came and said, listen, we're spending all of this money on, on testing outside of our walls. We would be wiser to use that money on an additional district psychologist. And that's exactly what we did. That's what Budget Subcommittee approved was. And that really, that wasn't an impact on the budget because we took the money that we would have spent.
And just allocated, yes. But I was wondering if we had hired some of that because I didn't see that that was on.
Yes, I believe, I believe we are fully staffed for psychologists. So I'll confirm that with Director Healy now that I'm saying that. But, but that, that's what happened with that, with that particular role. But I'm almost positive that we did. We hired, I don't have any openings, and I was kind of searching for this information earlier today. So it's a cost savings mechanism, and it's an opportunity to bring another person on board. That means that we now have a school psychologist for each building, which we've had for a long time, all 1.0. And then we have an additional psychologist, which again is just additional support to students, additional support for evaluation, and additional expertise in the district.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, so now what I'm going to move to is a transportation update with Five Star Bus. So as you know, we are just finishing, or we have just finished the first year with Five Star Bus as our provider for transportation. And if you were paying attention last fall, there were certainly some hiccups with, you know, the onboarding of this provider routes. One of the things that we've done this summer is meet with Five Star Bus to proactively plan and cut off any sort of delay or problem that we might anticipate. Part of, part of the benefit of year two is now our transportation company is not learning Middleborough. All right, so already, we're feeling much more confident. But I'm happy to tell you that Five Star, you know, was interested in meeting. We actually had two separate meetings. The first meeting included the business manager, the director of communications, and then personnel from Five Star Bus, including the VP of Operations and our terminal manager, Terry Carvalho, who's been wonderful. This is someone who came on mid-year, and you can almost draw a straight line. Once, once Terry came on, you saw just sort of a more even-keeled approach to rooting, you know, parent relations. I think the families were really happy with, with Terry. Terry's also local, knows the roads, and didn't have to learn any of that. So in that meeting, we talked about ways to improve, how we can improve upon communication, how we can root faster and get our job done sooner, giving families more notice. They then came and met with the leadership team. And Five Star really wanted to hear from directors and particularly principals about what they could do better, what was good, what could improve. And all five principals had an opportunity to give feedback. So one, it's really great that Five Star wanted that feedback. But two, to come and ask, I think, is a good way to solve problems and head them off before they are actually problems. One of the things they shared is that they created a whole new position in the dispatcher. And I wanted to formally welcome Susan Olaf. She has come on to support Terry Carvalho, but that is now another person that Five Star has put at the office full-time to assist with parent questions, you know, late transportation as buses do periodically run late. It's, it's another way that Five Star has invested in the community. And I have to tell you, there's kind of a significant investment that Five Star has made, if I can get this to switch. Oh, there we go. I'll actually jump down to that now. The investment in Middleborough is significant. They have the new facility. Many of you have probably driven by it on East Grove Street, which, which will include a garage bay, bays, more than one, parking, office space, and a training center. So this is clearly a company that's investing in this community. The anticipated completion of this project is sometime this fall, as with so many projects that are building that I think it's a little delayed due to constraints beyond Five Star's control. But to see them interested in our feedback and that desire to improve, I think, is promising and shows a commitment on the part of the district, but also Five Star Bus in them wanting to bring, you know, good quality service to our families. Routing, they are ahead of last year's schedule, which hopefully will translate to a very smooth opening. We are anticipating turning out routes by mid-August so that families have time to make plans, consider, have questions answered, whatever that may be. The communications team and I also got together to talk about ways to continue to improve communication around transportation. This is by far the thing that families report the most. It's very stressful when the bus runs late and they're waiting outside, and they, you know, they want that live time update. One of the things we're going to be doing when we share the routes is provide more detail around the procedure of transportation of students. What happens when your driver is absent? What can you expect? What happens when a route has to be, they have to run a double route? I mean, Middleborough's a geographically large community, so there's a lot of facets that impact the transportation of our students. But more detail, I think, is something our families want and would, would like. The routes will still be posted on the website and will also be pushed out via email so that families can go to our website to see that or they can look in their email. But I'm confident that this pre-planning will translate to a smoother opening this September. So before I move on to the next item, does anyone have questions about transportation?
I remember last year when Five Star came on, they talked about the whole, you know, kind of a GPS indicator of, you know, an app or some way to kind of track where is my bus now kind of thing. Did they give any updates on that?
Yes, well, I asked them about this geocaching. It was using geocaching. And what they ultimately told me is they're not happy with the accuracy of the app. And the reason that's dangerous is because if we go forward with an app that tells parents you're going to be updated in lifetime, and then it's not accurate, you're creating a bigger problem. So Five Star actually pulled back its use of that app with all of their communities until that technology is more accurate. They really didn't like that. But to that end, that's something that the director of communications and I have talked about. I think that whether there's an app or not, the trick is knowing, and the communication between Terry Carvalho and all the district administration is very strong. If we know that the bus is going to be 10 minutes late, we can push that out in one click to all families. So this is where at the beginning of the year, updating your information, making sure we have your cell phone or your house phone or your email address becomes important so that we can do the job of sending out that mass communication, everybody on bus, whatever, so that parents have as much up-to-date information as possible.
One other thing maybe to just bring up at some point is, and this is solely just having heard from, from students. It's not only problematic when buses run late. When they show up early, it's also a problem, especially when you don't live somewhere where you can see the bus coming and you only see it after it's gone by. So kind of addressing, what's the, what's the process if they get ahead of schedule to not have students miss the bus because they show up?
Right. Well, and part of that is making sure that the routes align with actual riders. Middleborough does something that not all communities do. All students in the district are routed for transportation, even though we know that there are students that our, our parent pick up and drop off. The reason that's done is because every student's entitled to that transportation. So even if during September and October, they're not getting, they're not needing a ride, they might come November and December. So that does make that accuracy more difficult. Particularly, I was talking with Ryan Silvia today. You have a lot of athletes. Have you ever seen a high school bus leave the school? You might be wondering, well, why is that bus not very full? Well, if you have 500 student athletes for the fall season, that's going to impact. But that's not what that bus looks like when it shows up. These are the things that cause early and late arrivals. So I think that's an information piece that the more we stay in communication with them about the tighter that's going to be. But I agree, early is, is can be as problematic as late, particularly if someone is needing to be there to receive that child. You can imagine, you know, racing home to get to the bus stop.
Where there's no other way for the child to get to school other than the bus, and the bus leaves without them.
Exactly, exactly. Thank you. Thank you.
The one thing I want to say about the Five Star investment in Middleborough, that was something that Sarah came up with when we put together the RP. So I want to thank Sarah for that because it also makes Five Star a taxpayer of Middleborough. And, you know, they put an investment in the community, and the community gets that back in taxes too because that, that facility, we didn't have a quote-unquote garage facility that they could do work at. It was included in the contract. They said they would do it, and obviously, they're following through with that. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate Sarah's work on the contract.
All right. With that, I will call Dr. Mark Alitis up to talk with us about the Staff Strong Mentoring and Induction Program. This program has been in existence for many years in Middleborough. It will take place this year, August 15th and 16th. And Dr. Mark Alitis is here to talk a little bit about, she has her own slide deck, so you'll want to switch the slides that she provided. Do you have those?
Awesome, thank you so much. Hi, everybody. Happy summer. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Staff Strong and also let you know why it is two days this year instead of three, as it has been in the past. At the end of our Staff Strong last year, we decided to survey all of the new teachers and ask them, you know, what went well, what went not so well? How can we improve? How can we make this better? And one of the things that we heard over and over again was that three days was too much. There was too much information, and it was really hard for them to take it all in. So we shortened our program. We made sure that the trainings that we provided at Staff Strong will be provided during the school year and during our mentoring meetings that we have during the school year. So they're not really missing out on anything. We really just listened to the feedback and changed the structure. So I wanted to go through our agenda so you had a sense of what we do for induction and mentoring. It's really an all-hands-on-deck. We have a lot of administrators who come and present. We have a lot of teachers who come and present. On the first day, when we welcome the new teachers, I will be working with the mentors in a revamped mentor training, which is part of us holding on to our staff. It's so important, and we know that good mentoring programs is really powerful. And if we can keep our mentors signing up and keep them engaged in this work, we will hold on to our new teachers as well. So the first day, Superintendent Lyons will greet all of the new staff. Colleen Randall and Kate Hetu are back as our coordinators. And they, along with myself, will do a presentation about what it means to be a teacher in Middleborough. We will talk about the mentoring meetings that will happen throughout the year along with the topics that we're going to cover. And that's things like creating a well-managed classroom, getting to know your community, communicating with parents, things like that. That's really important for new teachers. Our union, our Middleborough Association, will be there. They will present. Jen Healy will be coming in and talking about our special education. She and I will also do a very in-depth presentation on the policies and procedures that are in place. That's kind of the heaviest and driest part of the two days. So we will give them lots of body breaks to make sure that they stay engaged. Lunch will be bought by the district, and it will be from community restaurants on both days. Kevin Avatable will be presenting on a community classroom. Sean Siciliano and Katie Gudine will be doing an overview of Google Workplace and Aspen, which is a really important tool for new teachers to understand. It's grading, it's understanding who's absent. There's a lot of information in their IEPs. So it's really important that our teachers have exposure to that before they start. And then on day two, the principals will be doing the welcome on that second day. And I believe at this time, we have almost all principals. I know that Principal Branigan will also be doing Start Strong here at the high school. So he might be doing double duty or sending one of his APs over. We're actually going to be here at the high school, so that makes it a little bit easier. I will be going over our evaluation system. This is something that causes a lot of anxiety, a lot of anxiety with our new teachers. with our new teachers, so we go through it pretty systematically and answer a lot of questions. Andy Deizel will do dirt training and he's pretty excited about having the opportunity to be in a classroom to present this. And then I will be looking at the strategic plan with the new teachers and just giving them time to ask questions. And then we will finish up with the last hour where they will meet with their mentors. Day three, which does not exist for us, the teachers will be encouraged to go into their classrooms and spend some time there. Any questions?
Alitis, what I just want to add is that, you know, it's important to treat employees like they matter. And so there's that side of this program, but there's also the nurturing of new educators. And Dr. Mark Alitis is very humble, but it's important when teachers are new, that they're highly supported while they're learning in those first few years, whether they're new to Middleborough or new to the profession. So what's nice about this program is that it doesn't end on the 16th. That mentoring and induction program really carries forward the entire year for each cohort. And it's very well-received. They're surveyed after every year and it's honestly been a highlight for many years for the district. Dr. Mark Alitis has infused the support of administrators across the district, which has been a welcome shift. It's nice for people to put faces with names and understand that as an administrative team, everyone's very approachable, wants to help and, you know, nobody really wants to be a name or a role. So thank you, Dr. Mark Alitis, for that. The next item I have is the kindergarten social. So now I'm back with these slides. The kindergarten social is coming up on August 1st. I just want to turn to my slides. It's coming up on August 1st at Campi Amigas, which is at 375 Wareham Street. You might be wondering, what's a K social? It's really an opportunity to come and have incoming kindergartners and families meet, make connections, take away some of the unknown and the anxiety that lives in the unknown. They're going to explore a school bus, crafts, games. They'll meet the principal, Jeremy Goble. They're going to meet their parent-teacher association. It's a, this is an event that happens every summer. It's typically well-attended and I think our families have come to really enjoy an opportunity to be together before they're all together for the first time in kindergarten. No RSVP is necessary. The event is rain or shine. If, in the unfortunate event it does rain, there's an indoor location, so it doesn't mean you're coming to get soaked. Mr. Goble did send out an email to all families, but I wanted to make sure we put this up here and I'll talk with Mr. Siciliano about making sure we put this, we have a graphic to go with it on the website so that it's easy to find, especially as a new family in Middleborough, when you're looking for information, the easier we make it, the more likely you are to engage. Any questions about the K social? So with that, I'll turn to the next item, which is a possible update to the calendar for the 23-24 school year. Something occurred. Chairman Young and I received an email from a parent who was very helpful to point out that there is now voting on Tuesday, March 5th. When we set the calendar, there wasn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there was an election scheduled then.
Well, the state hadn't established this. It's a primary to the presidential election. And so that wasn't established. As you can imagine, there is multiple discussions going on across the nation about who's going to hold their primaries when. And so this, Massachusetts decided to hold the primary on March 5th. We have in the past not held class for a couple of reasons. One, primarily the high school and now the middle school are being used as election polling locations. Several years ago, there was an injury in Randolph with a child during elections. So at the time, the Secretary of State, probably in the 90s, sent out a notice that said if it was possible not to, either not to hold them at schools or not to hold them in session to try to avoid issues, which makes sense. And I'm sure Paul can attest that when you need space for people to park, you have to try to move students and staff to other locations and that doesn't always work out on that particular day. In addition, it also means that the, in our, in this building's case, the gym is no longer, can't be used, not for one day, but usually for two, because they come in Monday and set up all the polling booths. And the same applies to the middle school. What we've done in the past is set up a professional development day that day. Usually, obviously, we can have staff use this facility, other facilities, the auditorium, and then do trainings, but it, it just changes up. So Superintendent, I talked, we were, we had one scheduled in March.
Right.
And so it probably made sense to move it to March 5th to avoid all sorts of problems. Now, I would also point out that you will also see come next year's calendar, it'll include a September date and will include a November date, because again, it's presidential election and the primary day. We generally do it those, those days too. So they don't, that only fell into for March this year.
So one of the things you'll see, we currently have a full-day PD day scheduled, so that's a day that currently doesn't have school in session already, on Wednesday, March 13th. This would mean, if you, if you choose to do this, it would mean moving that day from March 13th, Wednesday, to Tuesday, March 5th. So it's not, it's not a significant, the 13th did not have significance, just to give you history, when this was being discussed, March is a long month. There was some desire to break up that month, but the 13th just happened to be smack dab in the middle of the month. So the team, I've spoken to the leadership team about this to ask, you know, what net effect, if it's moved, there is no significant effect. We can very easily rotate into the 5th. I do think the safety thing is real. When you have children coming in and out of school, you also have voters. You want people to come and vote, but that's bringing a lot of bodies to the school. There, you know, there are always, you know, safety concerns anytime you have visitors on campus. So, you know, I kind of presented to the school committee to decide what to do, but my recommendation would be to move, to move the day to Tuesday, March 5th.
So Chairman, I'm going to motion to move the 13th. Very sad discussion. Any, any problems with that? Like I said, we've done this in the past. It's just that this date hadn't been established when we made the calendar. And with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Genonymous, so we'll change the date.
Great. I'll also work with Mr. Siciliano about pushing this communication out so that all families are made aware as soon as possible. I assume not everyone's going to be watching this evening, but I think it's important that we adjust those calendars ASAP so that people can make arrangements. With that, I will turn to Director of Business and Finance, Sarah Hickey, for a budget update.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Lyons and school committee members for having me here tonight. When we change over the calendar year from December 31st to January 1st, it's always very exciting and there's parties and celebrations on television. Changing over the municipal fiscal year from June 30th to July 1st does not have holiday specials on television, but it's just as exciting with, well, for, for me at least. So with the changeover, with the end of the fiscal year, 2023 fiscal year, moving into the 2024 fiscal year, the, the best thing I can say is there are many different layers with a lot of things happening at a lot of different levels. For example, we have our operating budget and we have, and we're moving from our FY23 operating budget into our FY24 operating budget. We also have grants. We're in the, there are certain grants end on June 30th and don't exist beyond June 30th and some grants are rolled over from year to year. So that process is also going on. At the school level, the, I meet with the principals during leadership team meetings and we start talking about the end of the year, actually in March. And we talk about end-of-year spending and beginning of the new fiscal year. So for example, you should see the supply orders I have in my inbox right now that need to be signed, you know. All of the crayons and markers and supplies for next year are being ordered now as, well, not now as I speak, but tomorrow morning is. So that's another, another layer. In my office is even another layer where all the, the manual labor is done of the processing the purchases and working cooperatively with the town to finish out the fiscal year. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that are going on. So Superintendent Lyons and I keep a close eye on account balances as the year ends, so making sure that we have, that we don't spend more than we're allowed to spend. It, it comes close some years. And then there's the, the manual entering of the FY24 budget into the municipal finance system. It usually takes me three days to get all the numbers into all of the lines and that's something I look forward to at the end of July, beginning of August every year. So this is pretty much the, the update for the budget of where we're at. There are things winded down, wound down with FY23 and we're ramping up with FY24.
I should mention a couple of things. One is, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, we're in the midst of audit for FY22.
Yes, the, the town is undergoing its FY22 audit.
And the only other thing that I want to mention to people is that the town accountant has given his notice and is staying through to October. But I should also point out that there's an end-of-the-year report for FY23 due to DOE end of December.
It's due October 1st.
Okay.
The, the December date that you have stuck in your mind is if it's not submitted by a certain date in December, the Department of Education will keep the Chapter 70 funding for the town.
And they start sending me notes.
And they, yes, threatening letters.
So, you know, we do need, you need things from the town in order to do it. So it gets, it gets difficult, but Sarah does a nice job and we've never had that. I should mention that, you know, we get audited quite a bit. We, because we have federal funds and state funds, there are a variety of audits that we have to go through and I haven't seen any problematic piece with any of the audits that have come through and they usually send outline to me. It's, it's all, I will say this, auditors, by their very definition, have to add things. And so you see occasionally, I wish you did this. Well, is there a problem in doing that? No, but I wish you did this, right? And so they have to, they have to raise some concerns about something. And so it's all been good. I will also add that this is the first year we're auditing the student activity accounts.
Yes.
So this is the first time student activity accounts will be audited. They weren't, they did not need to be audited previously.
There was a, so student activity accounts are supposed to be audited every three years. Their last audit was 2017, so they should have been audited the spring of 2020 and we all know what happened in spring of 2020. So we're having the audit of the student activity counts done in September of this year and moving forward from there with every three years.
But it's one of the, one of the pieces that don't get audited as often is the, sort of the general pieces. So I just raised those. There's an outside firm. We have an outside, we hire an outside firm, depending on what it is.
So we're, the auditors, Hague and Sahadi, are currently doing the, they audited the end-of-year report for me. They're currently doing the town audit and then they'll be doing the single audit for the town for any accounts that have received over $750,000 in federal funds.
So is the, are the school accounts audited as part of the town audit?
This is a, this is a separate audit.
That the school district pays for.
Yes.
Separate from the town. Thank you.
To keep us compliant with state and federal guidelines.
Yes.
It isn't like we're just going out auditing because we think it's.
Because everybody thinks it's so fun!
But it's important because it's, it's sort of, if you think about school finances, we have a business manager and a superintendent. They get essentially, they're overseen, but in some respects by the town accountant and town treasurer because they have to process things and make sure things are done right. And then we, obviously, the state reviews how we spend things at the end-of-the-year report and looks at things. And then on top of that, for a wide variety of things, we get audited outside by outside firms to be in compliance with state and federal regulations. And then we have to provide those to states and fed, depending on what, what grant and/or program it is, those kinds of things. So there's a lot that goes on.
I'll just add that the state tends to audit big-ticket items. So one of the things you'll see are audits in the special education realm because of the expenditure, but it's not specific to do special. Anytime there's an expenditure, you can expect to have the state come in and periodically review. You don't get notice. It's not something you prepare for. They come in and ask and you, you tell them your practice and show them everything you do.
So when I first started here, the auditor explained to me that with the single audit, they randomly select certain accounts every year, but every single year that I've been here, they've randomly selected the IDEA, Individuals with Disability Educational Act 240 grant. So I understand probability very well. I used to teach it. So the probability of it randomly being selected five years in a row is not very likely, but I smile and nod and hand them all the paperwork they need. I would guess that it's going to be randomly selected again this year.
With that, that completes my report for this evening.
Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, I just have a couple of things. We have the high school building project. Since we last met, there hasn't been another meeting. Like, I think I told you, we weren't going to meet in July. Right now, it looks like everything will be finished up in August and that, that will be off our agenda because the project will be closed and paid for. So that's that piece. And then just a reminder to everyone that the MAS C, which is Mass Association of School Committee, is in Mass Association of Superintendent's Annual Conference is November 9th, 8th through 10th in Hyannis. That's out there for everyone, just as a reminder.
Is there anything that we, when do we need to, you know, officially sign up for any of those things?
So they, if you sign up by August, because they moved the date, you pay a pre, sort of an early fee, early bird special and you get, it costs the district less money than if you pay after August. So you can decide up to August.
Okay.
Well, you know, you can obviously go after that, but I'm just saying, it saves the district some money.
Oh, yeah, the early bird is the discount. So in this week's Friday Flash, I'll make sure I include what the deadline is for you to have to decide. Okay.
And you just send a note to Ann if you're going. You can also tell Ann if you're going to a particular day and she can work it out that way too.
Okay.
Sometimes the, the three days don't work for everybody, knowing that. Shall I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. The only thing I want to point out on the consent agenda, aside from warrants, the Akers Company was very nice to donate along with the Red Sox Foundation. They do a lot of work with the Red Sox Foundation, so they're donating 100 backpacks and supplies to Middleborough. Akers has been an extraordinarily wonderful program for us. They, it started out with, they are from Middleborough. They filmed a commercial in MEK and it gave us some of their equipment for that. And time and time again, they've come out and tried to help out Middleborough as best they can. So we really thank them. We are going to have them in at some point.
Yes, I spoke with Nicole Kelly this week. This, I want to echo what Chairman Young said. This company has been generous with the Middleborough Public Schools for a long period of time. They've outfitted entire classrooms.
With FM systems, they've provided supplies, they have, you know, funded things like these donation drives. The backpack donation was employee-driven along with the Red Sox Foundation, but we were only one of two communities selected. They've moved their headquarters here to Middleborough. So they're not only a family, you know, part of our Middleborough family, but just a really kind of amazing partner that we, that we have. And my hope was to bring them in probably for the first September meeting. What I'm going to do is try to snap some photos of the backpacks so that I can share more, in a more illustrative fashion, their impact, because backpacks and supplies cost a lot of money and 100 backpacks has a significant impact on our community. So I'll come back with Akers so that we can thank them more, more robustly.
Any questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Genonymous. The only thing related to that that I should mention, unfortunately, I know the Christmas tree company is closing. When the Christmas tree company came to Middleborough, I know from experiences with running the youth soccer league, that the Christmas tree company, when they were owned by the Belzekean family, had always been overly generous to Middleborough and especially Middleborough. and especially Middleborough Sports and Middleborough Youth Programs. They constantly provided checks to be a good neighbor